Okay, it's Wednesday, April 19th. It's four o'clock at 2:00 23, and we're going to start the Sagaville, Town of Sagaville Select Board meeting, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, approval of the minutes, Select Board meeting April 5th, 2023, Select Board meeting April 12th, 2023, and Annual Town Meeting April 13th, 2023.
Make motion to approve A, B, and C as read.
Second. All in favor? Item three, review of treasurer's warrants payroll 31, 34, and accounts payable 32 and 33. Most approve A and B. Is it read?
Second.
All in favor? Open session. I know why you three are here. I don't know you, so did you want to speak to us today or?
Is that inside now?
Yes, that is.
Am I supposed to say it back?
You don't have to.
You can just say your name, say your name.
My name's Beth Browell. I'm actually here today because we have an issue on School Street with people parking all the way up and down School Street, and there's no parking on School Street, so I didn't know if there's a way to enforce it. This winter, there was a lot of air horn hunking when the plow guy was plowing in the middle of the night. In the summertime, people park on both sides. You have to zigzag up and down the street, and it's a pain in the butt.
Which street is that?
That's right.
Oh, right by the far end.
It's toasted both ways up, no parking. I've lived here for 10 years on School Street, and the last couple of years, it has snowballed. One person parks on the street. Now everyone's parking on the street.
And they're parking on the sidewalk.
And they're parking on the sidewalk. I like to walk my granddaughter. There's not much of a sidewalk up here, but I can't use it because they're parked on the sidewalk and in the road, so I've got to walk further in the road. And yeah, it's just a nuisance, and I'm sure that it wouldn't be cool if I parked all five of my vehicles up and down the road too. I mean, it's just a cluster.
I know for snow removal, we can tow them. I don't know about the parking.
Is this to my residence?
It's residence.
So the apartment buildings don't have enough parking for the capacity?
They can make it work. I mean, I have five, six vehicles.
They have, they have for years.
Yeah.
Have those always been apartments? So that's not, that's not new?
No. Like, a few years ago, the lady, one of the ladies living in this gray one, which they park three vehicles almost at all times on the road. She was parking on the far end and kind of squeaking in. They've planted flowers there now, the people that bought it, but you've got to make it work. They have this side, the driveway goes deep in, and they don't utilize it. And I did talk to the fellow last year and say, you know, there's no parking on School Street. It's kind of a pain when I'm trying to come up the road, and I've got to go around, and there's cars coming down. It does happen. And he said, well, I'm going to park where I'm going to park. And I talked to Lorna about it. She probably got the same response from the fellow.
I would think if it's signed, that's the Sheriff's Department.
Does this sense, Gordon?
Do we have parking?
Yeah.
It's more so with the new owners of the building.
It's not living in speed, we're not stopping.
It's worth asking.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's the Sheriff's Department enforcing it.
When you turn on the street, there's cars.
I mean Dexter would do their own. I, we, I'm, we have no objection to seeing if the Sheriff's Department would enforce our, we don't, obviously, we don't have any.
I know that we don't have, like, an enforcement.
But if they would, that might be a start.
Yeah, I'll reach out to them tomorrow, Beth, to the Sheriff's Department. I'll give you a call and see what.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to be a complainer, but I've waited really long, and I'm like, no, that's it.
No, it's valid. And like I said, we do have, I know we have the authority to tow for snow removal.
Yeah.
I don't know if that happened. It was, I probably came close a few times.
No, I think Clint probably was tooting the horn because he wanted us to complain, but poor Lorna, I'm calling her going, you know, Lorna, I don't sleep as it is, and then I'm dozing off at 1:30, and he's out there, ooh, I said, waking up the whole road because they're parked on the street.
Yeah, yeah.
Lorna will check into it and let her know what to expect.
Sorry.
No, no, that's fine. I mean, I had a show with a nice letter as well, just especially because of the fire department, for the fire trucks being able to get in and out.
They're not going to be able to get in and out and back in. I know, I drive these trucks, and it's tight, and when you've got cars on the road, and they need to come out, there's been times we couldn't turn left because people were all over the streets, so we had to go to a call and then tour out of the way. Yeah.
But I'll reach out to you.
This new, this place that they just remodeled, was that apartments before?
Yes. Yeah, there's plenty of room for them to all park over there. They just.
Over here.
I wonder.
They can't park there.
I wonder if we can do something.
They park right here on the corner.
I know, oh, I know. I mean, that's an issue. No one can park there, and people park there all the time. But that's not an option.
That's not correct.
No.
I mean, we might want enforcement there as well.
That is correct.
I mean, it's not great for them to park.
Yeah, I know.
And those people are at the apartment building.
Across the street, yeah.
That park over here, the parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, to me, it's the Sheriff's Department. Hopefully, it's the only.
If they're, we're going to get one of me read soon.
I'll reach out to them, and I'll let you know in a while. Give you a call.
Yeah, okay. That'd be cool.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you.
Do you want to move ahead to the planning?
Sure.
Because we, these guys came in, I appreciate it. So you saw this suggestion for an application. She sent this to me because Mechanic Falls, they have an application for everything, so it's this kind of comprehensive document. And I guess it's a fee for virtually everything. So that wasn't going to be a fit for us. But Farmington, this is a standalone solar application. Obviously, we would tailor it so the prices match our prices and so forth, but if you guys like it, that's.
For me, it'll work. I'd probably just get rid of the prices on the front because they're laid out in the ordinance.
Okay.
And that back page is a little excessive, I think. Probably don't need any of that except for the, you know, by signing the law, solar energy, code enforcement, they're, you know, submitting applications. I don't think we need any of the other stuff. I went through it line by line, and, you know, sometimes too much information is a good thing.
Yeah, but sometimes less is better.
Less is already.
Less is more, yeah.
So where did you want to cut it off, Lynn? Sorry, I just wasn't on the page when you were talking about.
On page three.
Right.
I probably would get rid of everything except the, from by signing below and down.
Oh, so everything above it?
Above it, yeah. The 12 sets of applications and the enforcement standards and the two or three paragraphs that was off.
Why did you want me to get rid of that?
I think some of it was more than we have. You know, we don't have, advocates shall submit 12 sets of the application site plan maps and applicable supplemental incomes of code enforcement, you know, along with the required fee. I think it's submit the fee, but why don't we 12 sets of applications like this?
I see what you have. We don't have that many departments.
What I would kind of wonder, if we could take what is in our ordinance and use that verbiage where it's applicable in this section. Because I know what you're saying, as far, even with the fees, as far as they don't, really, they don't need to be here, but on the other side is, if somebody comes in, I don't see where it hurts to have them on.
Yeah, residential is going to be erased completely.
You either get rid of them or adjust or adjust.
Or adjust. Definitely have to be adjusted.
Correct. But I mean, and then the rest of this, that's how I would see this.
I probably wouldn't even put the residential one on.
No, no, we don't have, our ordinance doesn't cover it, so.
And in that last case, it speaks about tow enforcement shall submit a letter stating whether the application is known to be in violation of any town ordinance regulating land use on this parcel. I mean, that would be, I guess, if someone had back taxes on the property that they would have to put the solar company on.
Or if it were in its, like, shoreland, it would be, that application wouldn't fly.
Yeah. I guess that could stay.
I can't think of the other conditions, but there might be other conditions. I don't.
I mean, obviously, if somebody's in the rears on taxes, it probably, if they really want to find the solar company, get them on a hawk first.
Correct. Well, I mean, as long as they're not at the point of you losing them, it doesn't.
I believe they pay the fees to take you out of tree rows.
Right.
Like if they wanted to put one on the old landfill. We probably wouldn't let them do that without a study.
Yeah, that would have to be.
Yeah, so I mean, I can try, just trying to think of examples where you might say, nah, I'm not so sure that they.
Nah.
But if somebody is in violation of, and it says of any town ordinance, so this is saying, it's just making the applicant know that you are going to.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it falls in the, you know, too much information kind of word, but I don't know. I just thought some of it was redundant, but it's just my opinion. Doesn't matter.
Right. I think it's just disclosing that you are going to also disclose to whoever goes through this application that, that, that if there's any other violation of any other town ordinance that you're aware of, that you're going to put a, submit a letter attached to this application. Although, would the application go up to you, correct, code enforcement?
Well, yeah, it comes to me that it just goes, it didn't just go with file.
Right. So you'd be, that's a letter to yourself.
That's, that's kind of.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
That's kind of where it is. That's what it is.
Naturally, if, if you read the ordinance, it would adopt.
It's got to go back to Jerry.
We get one of these applications, then there's things that we have to do.
Right.
We have to do a site evaluation, and if we need extra consultation, we have to do that. So we wouldn't be able to do that till we had an application. And it made me wonder when the date of the application fee would be due and when the charity bond would be issued. Because upon an application, and if we went and looked at it and said that we really needed a consultant, if we had not collected the fee with the application like you do in shorelands on or any other thing, we wouldn't be, wouldn't have the fun of town and the funds to do that.
Right.
Right. So I think.
I think the check goes with the application. It's an application fee. So that's what I would anticipate is when, if you don't have a check that goes with this, it's not a complete application.
Yeah, well, that's kind of covered in what you were talking about on page three.
Well, yeah, by signing imposed filing fees are paid.
And there's an imposed filing fee.
Yep, right, yep.
In our ordinance, did, there was an application fee in the ordinance?
Oh, yeah. Significant.
Just, just for one.
Correct.
Yes.
In fact, the math is different on the application than it is on the, the annual inspection. 50 cents per versus 500 per, and it's the opposite of what you might think. The 50 cents per is.
Medium to large.
It's more expensive. In fact, Tyler had, with the original one we had, had a typo. She had repeated that formula twice, and it was, it just with an error. And so the last one, there were two different formulas. But I, I think we're going to find that these are pretty large checks by the time you do the 50 cents per.
This, I mean, this is exactly what I was looking for because I wanted something other than the building notice for things like this.
Correct.
We wanted the planning board to have a chance to take a look at stuff. You know, both of them.
So do you guys want to play with this and?
Yeah, I'm good with it. You know, make the adjustments and stuff.
Yes.
I think, I think we should get the fees.
Yep.
That match the ordinance and stuff like that.
Yep, and.
So get the application fee onto this stated.
Yes.
Or at least that it's specific in the imposed filing fees that you refer to on that. My question was, when then application fees are due?
Upon, I think upon handing this application.
Non-refundable.
Correct.
Yes.
Because just like Jerry said, there are expenses associated with this.
Exactly. Very well could be.
Yeah, almost certainly.
I mean, it's expensive.
Yep.
So Jerry, back to you, kind of touched on it a little bit. I know this is the application, but is it, would it be easier to get this tweaked as far as as part of the application? But then, so like now it's page three, would it be, instead of creating a separate document, would it be better to have a page four that goes on the back of this thing? And that has all the things like you just mentioned that needs to happen after this? So you almost have like a checkbox that this is the application, and then as the planning board and the code enforcement goes down through, you know, yes, item one's done, dated, signed. Item two, done, dated, signed. So this could be, it's the application, but you're going to need something to track all this stuff to make sure everything is followed properly. So is it easier to do a page four so it's all together with the application? Or should we have something separate that goes with it?
First, it's going to be application fees, and then you're going to have to have the plans, the site plans been delivered with the fees, and then you're going to have to have the bond that's been.
Yeah, there's a step. In fact, you could take your application, once you've accepted that with a check, and then you, you, you put your check sheet, your check sheet onto it. And that, you don't, we don't, until that's completed.
Punch list.
Exactly. You can't launch it.
Yeah.
Right.
So that.
So that's what I'm saying. We could either come up with a punch list and actually have it page four part of the application so it stays with it, or create a separate document that you staple to it later. Doesn't really matter how we do it, but I think, I think that part is equally as important as this part.
I think page four would be the easiest way to do it.
Subdivision ordinance has the, you, you go through the checkboxes.
Right.
It has everything to do with route, and some of the stuff that's in.
Keeps you organized.
Yeah, because their roads is going to have to meet.
Yep.
Fencing, yes, this, that, yeah.
Yes, there's just a lot of boxes to check.
Get to go turn on the switch.
But that's what I mean. I think it would be, whether it's part of this application or something separate, but I think it's going to be very nice to have that. So that way, they, not only.
For us and for them.
Correct, because it makes sure that you remember, oh, yeah, this one is done. I don't need to worry about that. Or this is when it was done, and this was who. So when you get down to the bottom and you do have a question, you know where you're at, who to talk to.
Give them a roadmap, and then it gets us so long as we both match again.
Correct, yep.
Which is really probably the more important part, is to make sure everybody matches that again.
And whoever's, I mean, you, you could initial each one of those, or Jerry, if it's the planning board, whoever's initiating that these steps are done, we'd have good record of it.
Right.
That's a good idea.
Because I think that's, that would keep everybody out of trouble.
So.
And anybody can look at it and understand where.
Right, exactly.
Where you are in the process.
Yep, how many steps are remaining, that kind of thing. You don't have a, a way to rework this that you're aware of?
It was a, it was a read-only document.
Yeah, I can't, yeah, I can't.
I told you, I tried to highlight that.
I couldn't do it. Actually, I think it's because I just need to purchase the PDF program.
I would say if that, if, yes, I think you should be able to do that.
Yeah, so I'll just go ahead and do that, and I should be able to, because they could send the edits, and we could take care of it in the office and.
Yeah.
So you have it now in a PDF?
It is in a PDF, but I just can't.
She doesn't have the software.
It was a read, a read-only doc.
I don't have a software.
I suppose you can save more than Word.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I do. Save it, like, before you print it. You save it as a PDF. As a PDF.
And sometimes it lets me, and sometimes.
100%.
Every time I try to do, every time I try to do that, breaks it all down and makes it.
It does, but usually you could delete space and edit.
But I think at that point, it's probably just our best interest to purchase the program so that we actually have it.
Sure. I think, yeah, I think if you have both, it will let you save it either way.
Yeah.
Maybe if you're missing one, you can't.
Yeah.
So, all right.
I'll work on it.
So you guys are going to bring it back to her, and she'll, and we can let the, I'll let the attorney know that we're going to work with this.
Okay.
And I, I'm not positive, I think it's free.
I had the, the girl Rebecca that was here at the planning board meeting from the solar company, she emailed me and knew that the ordinance passed and wanted.
I sent it to her yesterday, yes.
She's reviewing it.
Okay.
Was that the one that just refreshed me, the more environmental side?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Now, we missed this month's meeting because of the county and the same town, and we have a Saturday, but to make it off the calendar.
We're getting pretty close to it. We only walked three weeks off from the next meeting. I don't know how big of a rush we are to finish this.
Well, as soon as you get the application ahead.
It could be any day, someone's, they already have to abide by the ordinance, but now, now if they come in, we're kind of.
Yeah, and we've got, you don't know when another one's going to come in.
Yeah, we're just writing on.
So I would, yeah, if you guys can put a bow on that, it would be great.
How many more are, I mean, you have three here now. Who else? You got Blaine?
Blaine and Timmy's taking a leave of absence. He's not supposed to be in crowds until he finishes his trip. But he said he'll be back.
Okay.
I didn't make a request.
I mean, the big, the only big thing we need to do is come up with a punch list.
Yep. I mean, that might be something you guys can shop, swap by email and.
Yeah, it needs to kind of spitball it.
Yeah, exactly.
Because it's the interpretation of what's, what is in the ordinance that's required.
Well, and then between that and what's required at the state, it's not, if there's something below it that's in the state or state, we'd have to pull it.
I mean, our big thing is, our big thing is going to be the application fee, then the bond, and then, you know.
Site business.
When they start, whenever they start construction day, you know, just kind of checking in is just on, is this the, you know, we're stage one, stage two, stage three.
Yep.
I think there's only 25 or 6 items. I don't know if it's just being redundant, putting down, you know, fencing and blah, blah, blah.
No, but you might have a similar punch list for inspections too.
Yeah, actually.
We may have to build one.
Yep, but you've got a little time for that.
Yeah.
We don't have much time on this. So.
Yeah, we just, you get a couple of us together and just, we just need to figure what we need for all those, what items are critical.
Well, make sure, I mean, if Blaine can get to it, you guys can just start working a little on your own. Then when you do get together, you probably, each one of you will think of a different piece of it.
That's a good point, yeah.
So once you do get together, you're going to have most of it anyway, I'm sure. So.
Blaine doesn't do the, do the tech stuff too much.
No. We will figure it out, man, as soon as you, you know.
Yeah, right. Must have work in a minute.
Okay. In fact, I will, I'll let Tyler.
Do you guys have any ideas as well?
Yeah, well, we're all new to this, just like you guys.
Basically, we're all going to read the, read the ordinance.
Yep.
You know, we'll find through the phone.
Pull it.
Find out what's required.
Right.
You know, at different stages. How many stages out there?
Yeah, and if I, if any, if you have, if you want to bat something around, feel free to call me anytime.
All right.
Send emails to us, and we'll.
I have them.
Share them.
I'll do you.
This is just the ordinance, the fancy cover.
But I'll let Tyler, I'll let Tyler know that we're working on the app.
Okay.
And when you guys do decide, when you do figure out when you're going to meet, and this is what you want to work on, if you want us with you so we can try to, to get it going quicker, just let us know here.
Yeah. Or, you know, see, if we could work on it, we, me, you, and Blaine could show up at a select one.
Mm-hmm.
And kind of spitball it a little bit.
And we'll do that anytime.
We can come to your meeting.
Yeah, whatever works for you guys, honestly.
They have more meetings than we do.
Yeah. Well, we have a history, we basically meet as much as it takes to get the stuff done.
Yeah, we meet.
Usually twice a month, correct?
At least, that's the least.
If we've got projects, we'll meet every week.
Or a couple times a week.
Yeah, it's been done.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Yep. Chris, we, I see you have arrived, and we had our open session. Did you want to speak today?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Town, uh, yes, that's correct, Town Hall Building. I think, I think we ought to push ahead with the, the engineering package so that we know exactly what the cost would be so we could, we could hand something to a contractor and get that.
Right.
And I also am wondering if simultaneously we push ahead with a thorough valuation of what it would take to rehab that, the old building.
The Town Hall.
Right.
Right, yeah.
I mean, we have some foundation first floor stuff that's pretty dated. These guys came up, they did a pretty good job. I mean, it was a walkthrough. Maybe we see if they would do the same thing with that building.
So Plymouth Engineering is not what we, Campbell was the.
Campbell is a similar.
Right, right.
Outfit.
I'm just concerned, I mean, you take that Town Hall, that building over there, you're not going to get a contractor in here and do a head-to-toe evaluation of that building and all the work to give you a cost or nothing.
No, I don't think it's going to be free.
That's what I'm trying, that's why, it's not going to be free.
No. But you, you're not going to end up with an engineering package either. It's just going to be kind of a, an estimate.
Overview.
Yeah.
Of.
Well, and that's what happened to us with, with the engineering firm out of Old Town. They said, you know, and they only did the foundation.
Right. Right.
That we did this, if you want us to get more detailed, it's gonna be, and it was over ten thousand dollars.
Right.
And we weren't talking about, uh, getting it to the point where you could have weddings and graduations.
Right.
So if, if we're gonna go top to bottom, I don't know what that's gonna cost, but he'll give us quote. And he's gonna be up here anyway.
Right.
And I thought, um, we share with him what we got from, uh, Carpenter, what we got from the insurance audit, give them that whole bundle.
Insurance audit is huge.
It's, yeah, that's comprehensive. Um, and so, and then, but see what he said, he'll give us price. Now, if the price is scary, we, we won't do it. But at least we can look at it.
Yes. Yeah, I think we should go ahead and.
So it's kind of a two-pronged thing. I'll, I'll reach out to him.
Okay.
And have, cause he's gonna have to reach out to you to get the, the comprehensive engineering package for the public works building.
Right.
Uh, and we'll get that ball rolling. That all make sense?
Yes. Yeah.
New business cemetery deed.
Yes, um, this is for Sandra Matthews, sixty-eight cent upon amount. She purchased a full plot at the townhouse cemetery. So just need for you guys to sign it, accept it, she's already paid for it, and then I'll file it to the. So I'll make a motion to, that we, um, go ahead and sell this plot. Um, it is designated in the old session, row five, plot sixty-one. Um, uh, in the, does it say where it's on the townhouse? Oh. Where does it say that? Just, I'm just, it says town office in the Sangville town office. Oh, on file in the town. Oh, townhouse cemetery. There it is. In the townhouse cemetery. That's my motion.
Second. All in favor?
Sorry. I just didn't see it.
So our application we did, uh, item seven, town manager's report.
We touched that ink for a second. It smudges.
Oh, yeah, mine's bad.
That's why I don't even touch this for a minute.
Blow on it.
That's why even my, I make sure my pen does not even.
These are really messy. I should have used yours. And, you know, it's gonna be on there for the next two hundred years.
That's right.
That's why I even do that for mine, just to be careful.
Um, tw- uh, A fifty-four, tax liens filed for twenty-twenty-two unpaid taxes.
Yeah, on April thirteenth, I filed fifty-four unpaid taxes.
Fifty-four?
Fifty-four then.
How's that compared to last year?
About same.
Okay.
That's our number.
Yeah.
So again, when we have the next, these are the numbers that we need when we have the next conversation about the building. Because the twenty-five, thirty people that always express the interest of repairing it, there's fifty-four that are always unpaid on the taxes on top of everybody else. So that's all part of, I actually think you said something about it, I mean, you know, not everybody can afford that. So.
Can afford the taxes we got now.
That's, that's what I mean.
Right, and add it more to it.
Prove, proven every year. So it's just one more, when we have the next conversation, it's all part of it. So that's all.
Row commissioners' report.
I have the, uh, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four plow contract, uh, with CW Newt. It's gonna be, let's see, like a hundred eighty-one thousand a year. I just need for you guys to sign that. We approved it at town meeting. So just need to signatures. I'm gonna have to make a motion. Yeah, so I, yeah, I'm gonna have to make a motion. So it's a hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
So when, when are we gonna put up for the next time? Can we put up for one year, three years?
Yeah, I will be putting out again usually around May or so. I'll start next year's process.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to accept this contract from CW Newt. For a total of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six and thirty cents for the plow's contract of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Second. All in favor? All three in favor? Select board concerns?
Uh, I just have one thing. Um, oh, and it's just notification. Um, for the last month or so, I've been working on garnering donations for the fire department. And, um, I got noticed today that we are getting ten sets of turnout here from a, um, two fire departments down in New York. Um, and they have coordinated, these two fire departments have coordinated on, and put them all together because one fireman's driving up here to Katana Iron Works next month, and, um, they've all been laundered, washed, you know, they chemical washed their work, ready to go. And, um, so they're, will be delivered right to the fire department, um, next month.
That's like, didn't he tell us they're like five thousand bucks a set, you know?
Can't remember. Yeah, just about.
Yeah, I mean, that's a.
So, we got, we got some other donations, um, but it remains whether we need them or not.
Awesome.
A fire truck and hose, lots and lots of hose.
That water feed we need.
What do you?
No, the, uh, storage detachment portway. That would, that was something I asked for a couple of years ago. Cause it, it'd be very handy if people hydrate to be able to feed more than one truck.
Oh.
I saw a picture of it.
Okay.
And I was excited to see that.
And it was part of the, it was part of the donation?
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know because the, the person who's driving it up, um, he's driving up a three-quarter time. And he said, if I don't need to bring all of the hose, you know, let me know exactly what you want because obviously I don't need to drag two massive pallets of hose up there, which weigh a lot, I guess. I won't do it. If you don't need it, I won't bring it. Um, so, um, I know that there was.
That storage connection would be extremely handy.
Okay, okay, I'll let him know.
They're not cheap either.
Yep. And there was a, um, generator, did you see the generator?
I didn't see.
There was a generator that goes with, uh, it's not a jaws of life, but it, he termed it, um, it's.
It's a cutter.
A cutter.
Yeah. Right, it's a hydraulic pump.
Yeah, yeah, a hydraulic pump that goes to the cutter.
Yeah.
And do you need that?
Uh, I don't know if we necessarily need it, but we know of a department that does.
Okay.
So if it shows up, we know where we can send it.
Great, very good.
The way that's, some of that stuff when that shows up, that's when we're gonna turn around and sell some of those to, or are you just gonna take it and donate it to somebody?
Oh, I, I don't know. Um, as long as the department's down there, say they don't care once it ends up here, we can do whatever we want with it. So.
Awesome.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm happy, I'm excited about that.
That was, that was, you accomplished that quite quickly too.
And they were so happy to do it. And I, I don't think this is the end. I mean, once we have this liaison, I think that it's, sky's the limit.
Sure, sure. And they, they also know people, and know people that know people.
And, and, you know, I was concerned about asking the one fire department whether they, they would bring the, the stuff from another fire department, and they were all over it.
Sure. That's great, Jerry.
So my parents, my parents did the transport and everything else. It was a whole family affair. So anyway, it's done.
Um, I, one thing I would, we could use, uh, if somebody's interested in getting involved with the, uh, park, uh, I noticed that there are kids recreating there today. Um, so we, we could use, if you know, just put it out there, if you know anybody that's. On the park committee.
And I did see fire, right? They've been up there doing, starting, used to clean up work and.
Do a pretty good crew there today. There's probably six or seven vehicles.
They're working on their possession stands and stuff, so.
I don't have anything else.
I have something. I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier. So on tax map twenty-one, lot eighty-two. I believe it's owned by the town. It's right on the corner.
Okay, yeah.
Down hill.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, you're right.
Um, would you guys entertain an offer on that? It would be very handy for parking.
We entertain an offer on anything the town owns. And you know the process, that we then have to take it to, but we're probably gonna have a special here in a few months.
Actually, as long as, so that particular lot he's talking about.
Has almost no value.
Oh, you, oh, is that, okay.
In the, one corner of it, there's a deeded part to.
Numerals.
Numerals.
Oh, okay.
There's a right-of-way that goes through it for the three buildings that sit there. So my thought was a thousand bucks and I'll pay you the closing costs and, and it would create tax revenue instead of.
Thought, suggestion, or this is my opinion, but to me, something like that, we would, no different than any other parcel. We would get the offer and then we've reached out to realtors in the past to, hey, give us an idea of the value of it, and then we go from there.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
If it works, that's something that we can do and you would know what that number is too. So if they did happen to come back and they said it was more, and if it's something, so we didn't accept your offer and you wanted a calendar or whatever, then.
As you know, that way, when we go to town meeting, someone raises their hand, did you get any, you know, other second opinions on this and.
And you can honestly say yes.
Yeah, we got three here.
I, I understand that.
But that's why we do it that way.
So I.
I've talked with my real estate attorney about this before and, and that was the number he told me to throw out. He said, you know, it's really not worth anything. It's been a liability to the town for decades. You guys have paid to mow it and whatnot, then.
What, what, how big is it? I mean, just as far as, does it say?
According to this. It is seventy by sixty-eight.
Very big.
Yeah.
And then you throw the corner out and.
But it's enough for a couple of cars to park. You know, you guys know I own a couple of Hiltons here.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
And parking's an issue.
And parking is an issue.
Yeah.
Cause like my dad parks across the street from public parks. There's nowhere for him to park, but he lives in the red building.
Right.
And in the wintertime, you know, we don't wanna block off your snow removal.
Right, right.
And we're, we try and be very good about moving vehicles. I don't know anything about that gray car though. Don't hold me, huh?
I know, I know, that's.
No idea.
That car's been there for.
Seven months or so.
Six, seven months now?
It's, it's abandoned, hasn't it? It hasn't moved?
It hasn't moved since.
No, my dad wanted to apply for an abandoned.
Yeah, yeah. I actually, I actually thought of doing that.
So do you need this offer written or is this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, but I, I think you're gonna find support. We just gotta do our.
Yep.
Keep looking, cause the town owns a few more of these up here too.
I just wanna park my old man up.
Don't, don't block his sign though. He's paying for the spot.
The numeral sign?
Yeah.
No, I, like I said, it would just, it would be handy for parking.
Yeah.
Pretty sure you and I talked about this a couple of years ago.
It's probably worth more to you than anybody else.
Right.
Well, the barber shop.
No, Melanie don't care. She likes her street parking.
Yeah, no, it sounds, makes sense.
She hasn't expressed any interest in it.
It makes sense.
And is that something we can dispose of, uh, because of the?
The value.
Under the ten thousand dollar value.
Okay.
If we have professionals come in and say, yeah, that's fair, that's fair, that's fair, then we're good.
Yeah, it's something that we can do, um, at this.
Well, it won't be, but I hit the lot right next door to it's valued at six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
The building that like thirteen thousand or something like that. It's not much. But I've been trying to make improvements on it. It takes time and money.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. It's four forty. We are adjourned.